All right, welcome everybody. Bring my microphone. Welcome, everybody, to the Marshall Public Schools Board of Education Special Meeting on this very snowy fabulous Thursday, January twenty-three, twenty-third, twenty-two-five. Ian, would you call the roll?
President Amanda Langard.
Here.
Vice President Shawna Gamble. Secretary Derek Allen.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Mark Mahalka.
Here.
Trustee Jerry Underhill.
Here.
Okay, now let's pause for a brief moment of silence. Derek, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Derek, supported by Jerry. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. We have public comment. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the board on agenda items only? Okay, let's move on to board topics. We have a school board vacancy to be filled. And we have, I think Ian has sent out the process to all four of our applicants. He sent out the process to all of our board members, and that is in front of you. You have the resumes and cover letters also in front of you for all of the candidates. And we have, right now, each candidate will be given five minutes to answer the following questions, which were given in advance. They will present in alphabetical order by their last name. The first question is, as a board member, how would you contribute to advancing our district's strategic plan? Additionally, what specific strategies would you employ to build community trust and support for passing a bond measure that aligns with our district's long-term facilities and infrastructure needs? The second question is, why do you believe you are the best candidate for the open board position? And then the third question is, if appointed, what do you hope to accomplish within your appointed term? So once every candidate goes, so first we'll have Jerry Bischoff, then we'll have Lauren Brown, then we'll have Jamie Brundage, and then Tim Donahue, and then, and then we will vote. We will publicly vote. Ian has the tally right there. We do need at least four members to approve a candidate, because it has to be a majority of the full board. We have seven members, has to be four that agree on one candidate. If we do not agree after the first vote, then we will have an additional question that we'll pose to the candidates, and then we will vote again. So. And then if we cannot agree, then the Calhoun Intermediate School District gets to choose for us. So hopefully, we can agree before it gets to that point. So, who is timing?
We have.
Oh, we have it, oh, great. Okay, so first off, we have Jerry Bischoff. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. To your first question, my job experience has given me the understanding and importance of teamwork, communication, strategic planning, and building trust within the community. I work as a firefighter EMT for Ringo Township, Marshall Ambulance Life EMS, and Kalamazoo. Under those job descriptions, we have to have job classification as, with FEMA, which gives us strategy planning for community involvement, for disaster planning, stuff like that, also teamwork planning. So for disaster, we have structural planning. So I've been doing that since I was about eighteen years old. I worked in Michigan and Tennessee. Also with that, I've worked with a construction company as project manager, when we build skyscrapers in Chicago, Miami, New York, also build Kohl's Department Store. So with that, we had to work with diverse people, with other construction company and city officials and building, construct, other building, construction companies. We had to do time management and, and make sure that we were on budgets and, and making sure that we were, stay on task and stuff like that. So with those skills, I think I've been able to cooperate, working with others, members, to work towards our district goals. I would focus on fostering a safety and inclusive learning environment, build community trust and support for bond measures. I would advocate for transparency, communication, and engagement with parents and community members to ensure that their voices are heard and their concerns are addressed. That's the first question. Second question, why I'm the best candidate? I don't know if I'm the best candidate, there's always someone better, so I'll be the first to admit that. There's always room for growth and improvement. So I will never say I'm the best. So I'm always open to improvement. I believe I, again, I have great problem solving skills under pressure, I'm also a single father, and I'm active, involved in the schools, try to do all I can for them at the Walters. My boys actually, last year, raised money to buy soccer nets up there. They did a really good job with that. So if we see a problem, we like to address it and take care of it. So I'm deeply involved in their education and the future of our children, as I've experienced firsthand of the challenges and aspirations of parents in our community. My ability to connect with diverse groups and dedications to service makes me a strong advocate for the students and families. Back in early two thousand, over in Albion, as I worked for Albion Area Ambulance Services before it was sold, Albion for many years tried to get a free health clinic, but it was never successful that. I was able to bring doctors together with the Health Alliance and the Community Foundation, and I was able to bring the doctors together and start a free health clinic, but eventually it came to be Grace Health, which is no longer there unfortunately. So that was what I did in early two thousand, to bring, to bring a community center. We saw that there was a need for it and was able to bridge that gap. So that's the second question. Third question, goals for appointment term? My goals would be to ensure that all children regardless of backgrounds have access to quality education, resources that empowers them to succeed. I would work to strengthen partnerships between the schools and family, emphasizing safety and quality and academic excellence. Additionally, I would advocate for programs that supports working parents and single-parent household, as I understand the unique challenges they may face. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next is Lauren Brown.
Good evening, thank you for having us here to have a chance to represent ourselves and speak to this. Obviously, you have our resumes or CVs in front of you, so I'll just start actually with a brief recap of who I am, because that actually influences how I think I can contribute. So I have three children in the district at age levels across the board. So I have one here at the middle school, one in elementary school, and one pending potty training, who we hope to enroll to Shamrock Center. Fingers crossed, please. I'm a teacher and mentor of future educators and administrators. I work as a college professor at Albion. And so there I work with students working for teacher certification, students who are actively doing their shadowing and all of that through Marshall Public Schools and other places. So I get lots of fun anecdotes and firsthand from them as well. I am a teacher, so I understand that there's a whole lot that goes into how you work with resources, how you do curriculum development, how you engage with families and students, how you get into all the gray areas, and all of the messy that comes with all the, all the polish and fun in a classroom. And I work in several capacities related to curriculum development, resource distribution, strategic planning and development, and many, many matters related to student health and wellbeing. Okay, so as a board member, how will I contribute to advancing the strategic plan of this board? By asking questions of community members. I work in Albion, I work with families who have students from Albion enrolled at Albion College, I have students from across this district who are at Albion College, who have experience in our classrooms here in the district, and have strengths and weaknesses that they've assessed as students here. I'm in Albion four to five days a week. I'm actually working already to get to know community members there a little bit better and to get their sense of what they'd like to see and how they'd like to see their families and their needs represented in our district. By advocating for and voting on measures that improve the overall health, safety, and wellbeing of students, faculty, administrators, and staff in our schools and those who contribute to them. By voting for measures that expand on our district's desire to improve inclusiveness, diversity, and accessibility in our classrooms, and for the many kinds of families who need our classrooms and our infrastructure. By using my knowledge in racial minority and ethnic studies, which is what my specialization is at Albion, to make sure that our curriculum is inclusive and equitable, and to make sure that various voices are represented at the curricular level, and that various students' needs, backgrounds, linguistic approaches and backgrounds are all reflected in our curriculum and in our staff and faculty. And by using my long time and ongoing experience in colleges and universities to assist with recruitment ideas and to think just differently and creatively about what brings families to choose particular schools or communities, and in a school choice state like Michigan, which is different from where I'm from, the different kinds of things that bring them to those decisions. What strategies would I use to build community trust and support for passing a bond measure? A lot of that is the kind of work that I do in my capacity as a professor. It's communication heavy, it's writing and speaking heavy, it's thinking about what are various constituencies interested in, where are the confusions, where are the disagreements, where are the weak spots? How do we translate what it is a particular bond is doing to better help our constituents understand how it's meeting the needs or the desires they have? Sometimes the language we're using or the way it's presented is at odds with what actually the substance of a bond is doing, and that might be where communication comes from. I do a lot of that with curricular innovation and representation to our Board of Trustees at the college, to various academic groups and community members, to students in the classroom, and those are skills that I draw upon every day, right? So I'm happy to do that here. And what do I want to accomplish in my appointed term? Also, right, the safety for me and the sense of feeling seen, feeling heard, feeling valued in the classroom for our students, and also for our staff and faculty is of high importance. Obviously, I support and want to work for the passage of the bond, that is very much on this committee's mind. I would love to say that's something I'd like to see happen, we'll see. And also, I have a vested interest in making sure that our Albion families and communities feel represented and seen in the schools, and that they are having their voices heard and represented at these meetings. And I want to, as I said, make sure that there's good communication all around with community members, family members, students, staff, and across the different communities and constituencies we serve. So thank you very much for welcoming us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we shut that, can we shut that door? It's open maybe. We have to have it open unfortunately. I mean fortunately, unfortunately, it's a little bit noisy. Okay, Jamie Brundage.
Hello, everyone, my name is Jamie Brundage. I've been a resident of Marshall since 2010, and I'm new to MPS as of twenty-two. I do not have a full understanding of every facet of the school system, because my children are only in elementary. That being said, I'm ready to learn, and I believe I can offer a fresh perspective with a long-term vision. The Board of Education has been on my mind for a couple of years now. This is not something I take lightly, I have thought long and hard about this decision, and just ask my husband, I think I made him a little crazy lately. In all seriousness, though, I know this is not an easy position to take on, but I like a challenge and I can thrive under pressure. After all, I'm determined to do what is best for our kids, and I will not accept failure. I'm the best candidate for the board position, because I am very involved with the school. If there's an event going on or a volunteer needed, I'm there ninety-nine percent of the time, no exaggeration. I'm sure my kids are gonna love seeing me at prom in a couple hours. In addition, I'm a member of three other boards in our community, including Walters PCO. I'm a good listener, I much prefer to listen to others' opinions and suggestions before offering my own input. I believe this makes me a good leader and team member. I'm a creative thinker, and I feel it is my biggest strength. I'm practical when I, and I work well, sorry, I'm practical as well with experience and bookkeeping for a successful company. I'm a hard worker, and I want to be involved and listen to people and understand their observations. I strongly believe that collaboration is key, and it takes many of us from all aspects of the community to work together to support these kids. I understand the significance that growing in a community where kids feel valued and supported can last a lifetime, and that can't be underestimated. As a school board member, I would like to contribute to our strategic plan in several essential areas. For academics, I want to strongly encourage the workforce programs and advanced education opportunities. Marshall offers unique experiences that students can't get everywhere. I would like to expand it if possible. As for the environment and culture, I would really like to get our elementary school kids together before entering middle school. Middle school years are tough in general, but I think kids would greatly benefit if they had the opportunity to interact before coming together. Sorry, I lost my spot. With the community engagement, personnel, and facilities, I think communication is fundamental. For community engagement, I think we need to lean into social media. We are inundated with negative things all day. I want to see positive posts from the school in the less than once a week. People need to see this, because the unfortunate truth is that bad news spreads a lot faster than good. Great things are happening at MPS, and I want to share it. For personnel, we are fortunate to have outstanding individuals working in our schools, truly amazing people, I have seen them in action, and it's truly beautiful to see. I feel recognition, again, through social media will encourage to recruit future great employees to be a part of this exceptional team. Facilities, the community really needs to see the state of our buildings to understand what is needed. I attended the open houses, but fortunately, the turnout wasn't great. Again, I think social media could be a powerful tool. All that being said, I believe all the aspects of the strategic plan really roll into each other. When we make improvements in one area, it will bring benefits to the others. If I'm awarded the position, I have two vital goals for my term, to pass a bond and to work toward creating a more positive vision of the school district. I believe that these are the biggest issues that we are facing right now. In order to pass the bond, I think we need to start smaller. There's been really good feedback through surveys and Facebook threads, and Facebook threads. I would initially like to see a focus on three things. One, upgrading all the safety aspects for our schools, such as fire alarms, security cameras, fencing, and crisis prevention equipment. Second, the auxiliary gym, I think would make the biggest immediate impact on the community and would be a strong step toward improving attitude and community engagement. Finally, including a maintenance plan on the bond as well. I've heard many concerns about whether the district has the ability to maintain, to maintain this building once it is complete. With this addition, we would encourage trust and support. To improve our image, I know we hate it, but again, social media is huge. Fortunately, I believe that we have students with great ideas, let's get them involved too. Student involvement can be on or off screen, or as simple as a quote. Let's include them in the brainstorm, their opinions are vital, and what a great opportunity to share direct insight from our students. We have a great foundation, so let's build on it and give our kids the brightest future. I want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to me. I want to thank the board, the administration, and the faculty for the work and dedication to our students. Thank you to all the candidates for their passion and support for our children in the schools. It is truly inspiring to be a part of this process and to be in a room full of so many people that care about our kids so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Tim Donahue.
Is it all right if I move this up here? Thank you very much. Good afternoon, all, and I do thank you very much for the opportunity to address the board today, and for the work that you're doing to find the best person to help our district and our kids. I would like to begin with the question about my strength as a candidate and why I believe I should be selected, but this is tough competition, I have to say. I do consider myself currently semi or quasi-retired, I'm not really sure that I found the right term yet, but it means that I have the availability to be engaged with something and be available for meetings and subcommittee meetings, in different ways that I can assist the different the district, that might be a little bit more than perhaps those of us that have full-time obligations outside of what they do for Marshall Public Schools. With my somewhat retired status, I've been looking to find ways to engage in the community, to find volunteer efforts where I could make a meaningful contribution, and I'd like to participate and fully contribute to that work as a school board member. But beyond just being available, I do have a long-held philosophy that successful schools make for thriving communities. I believe that success for our kids is produced from the strengths and the commitments of all district stakeholders. And the second part of my strength as a candidate is shaped by my long career in public education. I graduated from Michigan State University before I began a nearly fifteen-year career as a high school English teacher, and I think that was the most fulfilling part of my work. If you can get teenagers to be excited about grammar and diagramming sentences, I think you've really accomplished something. I furthered my own education while I was teaching, I completed a master's degree, and then later a degree in school administration. I have experience as a high school principal and a district administrator, where I was able to lead efforts on student achievement that focused on clear standards in the curriculum, assessments that inform us of what the student needs are, interventions that help those students that are below that standard, but also the ones that need help because they're above the standard and they want to stay engaged. I've also have additional experience in the work that I've done with school law, budget and finance processes, elements of HR, and different facets of what school districts do on many different levels. I'd like to transition now to other topics that the board has asked us to touch on. I do believe that advancing the strategic plan should be a key responsibility of board members, and it's very clear that there were high levels of engagement in the fifteen-month process that was used to develop that strategic plan. Of course, the board engaged in that plan development and still continues oversight, but I come from a perspective that the actual work rests on the shoulders of our district leaders and the staff members who know and live and execute that plan day by day. One suggestion that I would offer is that I think there should be monthly updates at each board meeting for progress on those strategic planning goals, and then those progress reports could be shared out with our community in the very ways that you do, I think, stay engaged with your stakeholders. I would also advocate for more specific SMART goals related to that plan cycle of the five, within the five years. In the documents that I reviewed, I found the five focus areas, but I didn't really see specific SMART goals that were undergirding those goal areas, but it was a brief look that I was doing. With regard to bond proposals and building support and trust for those measures, I would first say that I think you've, have all done a commendable job of trying to convince our community that that's a much-needed change to what our facilities are and the programs that we can offer. One outside perspective that I could add to that would be to consider maybe substantial efforts if there's another bond initiative from a yes committee, which I'm sure you had, but I was thinking about the size of our district and the fact that you're bridging two different communities, a process that's been going on for the last ten years. And when you look at those voting results, you're dealing with nineteen precincts and two communities, so maybe we need multiple yes committees that are out there in those specific areas. I thought that perhaps that would be a better way to engage someone from that area that could really advocate for the bond more directly. And finally, I'd like to share my thoughts on what I hope would be my term on the board. I recognize that I have no independent authority or platform to institute anything on my own, but a key focus area for me would be increasing our capacity for instructional leadership. My efforts would be centered on increasing the capacity for that, because our district and building administrative teams need to keep that focus as their primary goal, I believe. We certainly have many successes to be proud of, but I believe there are areas that need strong intervention and a reallocation of resources to help our struggling learners. One boarding meet, one board meeting I attended, I heard commentary about Harrington, and obviously the challenges of low academic results there. An idea was shared then to allocate more staffing or more resources, and I fully applaud that suggestion. In my work that I've done, I always advocated for building resource allocation decisions that are about student need, not just student number. I do thank you very much for your consideration. I wish you well as you choose from, it looks like, three very qualified candidates, and myself, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now is the time where we vote, and I personally would like to take just a few more minutes to kind of digest, review one last time before we vote, is that okay with everybody?
Are we able to make any comments before we vote?
Yeah, yeah.
And then we certainly can do the, take a little time, too. Would you rather, which would you rather?
How about we take a little bit of time, and then we do the comments?
Love it.
Thank you. All right, is everybody ready? Derek, did you want to start?
I, I just wanted to comment on the fact that I'm, you know, for everyone here, but also those listening, that I'm really, I'm really pleased at the quality of the four candidates. I can honestly say that I truly believe that any one of the four of you would do a really, really nice job and bring something to the district that would be helpful and needed. So that's, not, you know, that, just, just upfront, I'm just really glad to see the caliber of candidates, and I'm, I am, though I know that, you know, we've got individuals who have connections in Albion, I am disappointed that we don't necessarily have more representation from Albion showing interest in the school board, and I think that's something that I personally think as a district and as a board, you need to work on to, to get that, that level of interest from the community there. I think more and more representation from Albion is important. And I wish, you know, I just hope that whoever isn't, you know, for the three who are not selected, that somehow we, we beg you to be involved at a greater level, you know, whether that's on committees or what have you, or applying the next time, or running in the next election. No one challenged any incumbents this last election, we had four of us running, and there were no challengers. And so it's just crucial, I think, that for the, for the community and for the district, that we have consistently strong candidates coming forward and choices. You know, when, when you all appointed me the first time, I was the only applicant, you know? So we need, you know, so who knows if I should even be here? But, you know, so anyway, I just want to say that, because I, I could, I could vote for any one of the four candidates today, and, and see reasons to vote for all four of them. So I hope, and that's sincerely true, and so I hope they stay involved.
Thank you. Any other comments, thoughts to share?
I'll just second that, maybe I'm glad to see that we have multiple candidates. I believe when I was finally put on, because I went a couple times, but during COVID, of course, there was a lot of us, and then it tapered off real quick, and so I'm glad to see it start to build, that's nice, because I believe I was the only one when I- Because I believe I was the only one when I got on, so it's nice to see that. And I'll, like, just second everything. I won't delay it. We're good.
Anything else? Okay, so let's, I think what we'll do, Ian has a tally, and we'll just go by one by one and say the name of the candidate that we would like to vote for. We would like to approve.
Underhill?
Brown.
Mahalka?
Jamie Brundage.
Allen?
Dr. Brown.
Campbell?
Brundage.
Langard?
Brundage.
Okay, so that leaves, well, you wanna?
Brundage, uh, Brundage has three and Brown has two.
So that is not four. So, and we need four votes for, to move forward with a candidate. So now we are going to go to our second question. Each candidate will have three minutes to respond to the following question. What is the role of a school board trustee? And so I think we'll probably go since we've narrowed it down to the two candidates. So Brown? Lauren Brown? Anyway, I had to double check.
You both had to be Bs. Why did you both have to be?
I know, Br.
Don't talk about the curriculum.
That was a test. That was a test. I'm glad I passed.
To my mind, the rule of a school board trustee, right, is to think first of the students in our schools, right? Ensuring their safety, their wellbeing, and what's best for them. What I love and respect about what I've heard from the, the others that are running tonight and that I'm really grateful to have heard expressed here and that I'd like to then echo, right, ashamedly and secondly, is how wonderful our resources are that we already have in place and to build on those things. As a trustee, to my mind, it is partially to continue what we're doing really, really well, to make sure that we're safeguarding with the resources that we have and the best that we have in us, what we are already doing well and to make sure that those resources continue to be available while also expanding on and building those that are not as well funded or as well available to other students or not as made widely aware to our families and community members. It is advocating for me policy that ensures a strong future for the district, for all of the schools in our district, for all of our constituencies in the district. It is making sure that our students have several avenues into the school and out of the schools that they attend, right? So as some others have mentioned tonight, the many kinds of ways that they can go forward from here as community members, as employees in the area, as citizens in our state and in our nation, and giving them many ways of seeing themselves as already active participants in our communities and in the fabric of our culture while they're here. It is to value the input of our community members, to listen with open minds to what is not working, where we are failing, where we're not doing enough, where we're miscommunicating or where simply we aren't saying what we're doing well enough for those around us to see what it is that we offer. It is to value the input from our students and from our faculty and staff members on what their ideas are. They're the ones who are here every day. Our students have good ideas about what they love. They're children. Sometimes those ideas are kind of silly, right? But they're relatively smart and they're open minded and they're clear eyed as well. Our staff and faculty also, they are doing the hard work here every day and they need to be involved, I think, at every step in advocating for what is doable, what is implementable. And they know our kids. They know the structures that exist around them and they have really great ideas going forward. To my mind, the last piece that is important for a school board trustee is knowing that sometimes those decisions aren't clear cut and sometimes what is in the best interest isn't always what is popular or what is easy. That is hard to do. It is hard to speak. But to my mind, that is what the meaning of trustee is, that you're entrusted with something which may not always be popular, happy, or easy, but it is the, the hard and difficult work ahead. And so that is, to my mind, what the, what the role of a school board trustee is, to take that forward with ethical consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jamie.
What is the role of a school board trustee? I think there are many ways to interpret this question. There is, of course, a list of specific duties and responsibilities a trustee must do, such as policy updates, evaluating school performance, and providing discipline when necessary, et cetera. But I think the actual role of a school board trustee is more involved than that. The trustee's role is to be a part of a team working to guide the future path of the school district. Attendance and participating at meetings is a must. But researching, planning, brainstorming, and analyzing are all things that need to be done regularly in rotation between meetings in order to be able to provide valuable input. The trustee's role needs to be approachable, present and speak with people in the district at all levels, administration, faculty, and community members. These conversations will enable informed decisions that will do the most good. A trustee needs to be an active part of the community environment in order to get a firsthand look at what is going on in the district to gauge where changes need to be made and achievements, achievements need to be commended. A trustee's role is to support sharing information with the community, including goals, struggles, and accomplishments of the school district, and to create a transparent flow of information. In addition, they need to be a competent communicator with a thick skin sometimes. There will be difficult questions that cannot be answered in a face-to-face setting, and this needs to be recognized in real time. The trustee then needs to present these questions through the correct channels to provide a competent answer and then follow up, thereby promoting confidence and understanding. Finally, the role of a trustee is to go above and beyond what is expected because what they represent is too important to give the bare minimum to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we want to take a few minutes or do we wanna, are we ready to vote?
Just to clarify, we do get another opportunity after this. If we don't get four, this is not the cliff.
We have until midnight tonight, eleven fifty-nine tonight to make a decision.
It's like, it's like a conclave. You can just like lock the doors.
Well, we can't lock the doors. It's an open meeting.
We can send up smoke.
I was wondering where we were gonna send the smoke.
Yeah, that's probably the smartest idea, but whatever.
So yes, yes, correct. If we, if we do not agree on this next vote, then we open it up to board discussion. I guess we vote as many times as we need to.
Okay, okay. I wanted to clarify, okay, that it wasn't like there was like, we run out of votes. Okay.
Nope. Not, no, we can run out of time, but not necessarily votes. We ready to vote again?
Yeah, yes.
Mahalka?
Jamie Brundage.
Allen?
Brown.
Campbell?
Brown.
What's that?
Brown.
Langard?
Brundage.
Underhill?
Brown.
Okay, so we have one, two, three for Brown and two for Brundage.
That would be black smoke. That's black smoke.
Okay, so now we are gonna open it up to board discussion.
I feel like I don't know how to have this discussion. Like, well, you know, yes, I do. Yes, I do, because I changed my mind.
Can you bring up the microphone for the people that are watching at home?
I changed my mind, so I, I will talk about why. Like Derek said, every single one of you spoke to something that is very important to our district. Every single one of you. Some of you talked about multiple things. In terms of why I changed my mind, one of the things that stood out to me when Dr. Brown was speaking was talking about the resources that we already have. And I think that some of those things are underutilized and I also hadn't heard it brought up. And so for me, when we're talking about doing the best with what we have, I don't, I don't think we necessarily are doing the best with what we have, and that stood out to me. Yeah, that, that's it.
Any other discussion?
You know, I, again, I think I'm, you know, I, it's like I'm trying to, you know, I think that, I think that Jamie would be an excellent board member. That's not at all in question for me. I'm trying, I'm trying, so because I think everybody is qualified and brings something that's great, I'm trying to look for things that maybe we don't, we don't have as covered as well. You know, like skill sets or backgrounds or experience that maybe our current configuration of the board doesn't have covered as well, you know? And so like, I'm trying to like pick out, you know, it's, it's so, so close. But I think for me, what stands out is with Dr. Brown's number one involvement at Albion College, I think the more we can bring anchor institutions within the communities together, I, I'm proud to represent one of them, in my opinion, Star Commonwealth, the school district, Albion College, Oakland Hospital, right? Like anchor institutions in the communities, the more we can build those relationships and those collaborations, the better. So, you know, we've had ups and downs, I think, with the college. And so this is another opportunity, I think, to make that more, you know, more impactful. I also think that some of the content expertise that I see here in Dr. Brown's, you know, background and, and in her experience, there's some really, really powerful stuff here that speaks to some really complex issues facing our society, facing our communities, facing, there could be storms ahead politically and societally, where I think some of the things that Dr. Brown has experienced in might come in handy to have someone who has that knowledge. And so, and I don't have that knowledge. So that's, that's why, at least until eleven fifty-nine, right now, I'm planting my flag. I'm not letting the ISD pick the person, so.
Yes, we will not do that. We will not do that. We're not doing that.
Well, similar to what Derek was saying about bringing, I think, different backgrounds to the, to the table sort of thing, is that's actually why, and I don't know either of these ladies beyond what I've read here and so forth from meeting now. I, I think that's where Jamie Brundage's background is actually very fresh to me. Someone who is actually coming with experience, there's, I know there was Orion Engineering, I remember seeing that, but a nice broad swath of kind of like, you know, we've got from the Kesselwood community to the Montessori already, to Walters and so forth. And I agree with you a hundred percent on the, being there and attendance is big. I mean, myself included, having missed a few meetings recently for other reasons, but you know, these things happen. I think having us be here as a board is key. That was actually one little thing that just sort of struck me. It's not a guarantee that anybody is gonna, you know, make it or miss it, but it's just something that's important. But I, I, I think, I like the, I like the fresh ideas. The, the, to a certain degree, the openness of it, you know? I'm not gonna say that, that obviously you have a very well-rounded background, Dr. Brown. Once again, I, I just know what's on the paper here, but I think that's, it's extremely impressive. And I understand Derek's concerns that he brings up, but I don't think necessarily that defines who's gonna be the best person to help us in these situations. I actually like the openness. I like the idea that someone who's been part of committees and a variety of committees, working with different people, and that's really what it's coming down to, because we've had that issue already before. I, I don't think, we, we've personally had it so much, but I know in the past, the board has been, there was a time when the board was very conflicted. And I think the people who can help us come together is, is an important step. So I see that as a huge strength, and I mean, I can go on if we deliberate more, but I'll, I'll start with that. Derek, if you want to.
Like I said, all four of you can be on this board. And the reason that I went with Dr. Brown was that I need that Albion connection. I need somebody, you know, like Derek said, we need more people. I was hoping we'd get a couple candidates that were parents in the Albion community. But if Dr. Brown is at Albion College, that's an anchor, like he said. That's a big anchor. And Albion College is actually changing. And it took a couple of years for them to get back to where they were, and now they're right back to where they are again. And it'd be nice to have somebody there. Nothing against the other three, I think the other three can't, I mean, you know, any other year, if any one of you guys ran, you'd probably be on this thing. But I'm just looking at this from a perspective of, maybe I shouldn't, but I see Marjorie. I saw Marjorie at the college. I saw Marjorie in Albion, what Marjorie brought to the board, and I'm kind of seeing that in Dr. Brown, so.
With that said, you actually live here in Marshall, yeah? And I, and I understand the Albion connection. I'll be honest with you, I don't like that. To be, not, not that, to me, I don't care where you're coming from. Because with that said, then we've got people coming from a lot of other communities and then, then we need to, to a certain degree, I feel like we almost have to pander to everybody's because you're in the right location. So, and I'm not, I'm just, I'm just bringing that up. So while there's a connection with Albion College, I mean, I, I've been working in Albion for, since twenty twenty, sorry, since two thousand and four, when I came to town. I may be in Albion minus a couple people, more than anybody else in this room, you know, from that standpoint. So it's, to me, that's not what's going to make or break somebody who I choose. I want to know how we're gonna work as a board. And, and I'm not trying to pick on Albion. I'm not trying to separate Albion. It's not that at all. It's, I, I continue to have an office in Albion because I'm trying to keep my presence and hopefully we can continue to have that connection. I, I, it's, it's not that at all. It's, it's, the fact is that, that I'm looking, why that one strikes me as a little rough, I'll be honest with you, is this. We talk about being all-inclusive and so forth, and then yet we segregate out these things. I don't want to segregate things out. So it doesn't matter where you are in our school district. You are part of the school district. So it doesn't matter if you live in Albion, because at what point is it equal? Do we have to have three of two from this community, two from this community, one from that? It doesn't matter. To me, we're part of Marshall. So we either act like that or we divvy ourselves up. So that, to me personally, is one of those pet peeves I kind of get a little on, because I, I, I would, I would agree. It'd be great if more people from Albion come. I cannot force them to come, you know? And in fact, in this case, we have somebody, we were fortunate enough who was coming from the college, but not actually from, doesn't live in necessarily that community. And so what does that mean? I, I don't know if that means anything. I'm just saying it's, to me, I think what's, what's valuable is that we've got four qualified candidates. And I wouldn't care if they lived on the corner of, of, you know, what was it? It was Marshall and Suresko or something, you know? And it wouldn't matter, you know, but they haven't lived one street over. Does that matter? So that's why I don't, I don't have that issue. Just, just to be fair, just to be fair.
So this was tough.
Tough is good.
I, I, no, I, I think it's, I think we would be well-served by any of the four candidates. Unfortunately, we have to narrow it down to one. And I voted for Jamie because I feel like I want a board member that's connected to the community, that's in the schools, that's in touch with other parents, that can bring... other parents, that can bring that voice to the table, that volunteers at the P C O. But also, you know, Lauren, I, I, I like that she's connected to Albion and Marshall. I think that's an important perspective to bring. She has a middle schooler and an elementary student, so that even brings more perspectives to the table from kiddos in the district. But for me, the, the engagement in the district was, you know, it's kinda like, you know, just like a little bit. For me, it was, um, from what I'm reading, it, it felt like Jamie was a little bit more engaged in the district than, than Lauren. So that, for me, that was why I voted for Jamie.
I will second that, that's, when we talk about communication and, um, bond passing and so forth, that's been a big thing. Who do we have that's? That, that is a part of it, it is. I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, that was one of the things I was gonna bring up, too.
Any more discussion? Are we ready to vote again? Ready to vote again? Or do we want a minute? Or do we want more discussion?
I think I can vote again.
Okay. Are we all like processing?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Do we want more discussion, or do we? Okay. Okay, let's vote again.
Ellen.
Brown.
Gamble.
Brown.
Lankard.
Brundage.
Underhill.
Brown.
Maholka.
Brundage.
Three Brown to Brundage.
So, so I wonder if, um, we can go off the script a little bit and maybe ask the candidates one more question, bring them up, give them another three minutes? If we feel like there's something that we want more information on or more clarity, I mean, we can go around and around, right?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I was even thinking, um, they're, they're sitting here listening. Um, I'd be curious if they have anything that they would like to say, just,
Yeah, just say.
Maybe an open three minutes.
Another, another comment, just,
Yeah, that's a good idea.
You know, not necessarily putting me in the spot to respond to things, but it might, you know, they might be listening to us saying, oh shoot, I should've talked about this, cause of such and such, or whatever. Or, you know, that Derek, he doesn't know he's talking about, this is the real truth, you know, like,
Yeah, cause there's only so much information we can get from a, a letter of interest, a resume, and a couple of few questions.
If you came up with a question, you have to give them time to process the question. I mean, we just can't throw a question at them and not let them, you know, I'd want them to have some time to process a question, too, you know? I like what Derek is saying, let them just come up and say, hey.
That sound good? Just give them another three minutes to share any more information that they would like.
Yeah, kinda like in an interview, when you say, is there anything that we haven't talked about?
Is there anything else I should know?
We haven't asked you about that you'd like us to know? That's kind of the question.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, I guess the move of the day is by alpha order, so.
We could go backwards alpha order, cause we went.
Yeah.
The other alpha order before.
Backwards. What is the pleasure of the board?
Reverse alpha? I was just trying to make this difficult.
I was just going with the doing.
Okay. Good?
Good.
All right. Lauren, please come to the podium. Is there anything else we should know?
Thank you for your very thoughtful deliberation, um, and it is actually really lovely to see the process play out. Uh, I agree with you that actually, I think all four of us this evening are wonderful choices and bring many different talents to the table. I think that we're, uh, highlighting different strengths that we bring and different perspectives we bring, and that's actually, it's apples and oranges to some degree, right? Makes it quite difficult. Um, as a mother of three with zero preparation, I said, I guess I'll say, uh, I guess I'm, I, uh, I'm at the college quite a bit, right, and that's a full-time job, it's demanding, it's lots of committee work, it is lots of committees, just different kinds of committees. So I'm here and I'm in the community, I'm involved, uh, with my children in all of the various things they do, which includes for my up-and-coming professional soccer player, lots of soccer all the time, uh, with my elementary school student. My middle school student has done basketball and things like that, we're just trying to get him to try out all sorts of things and find his fit, right? Uh, we attend lots of the downtown events, I try to come to the meetings, I go to the parent-teacher conferences, we come when we can to all of the things that are here. We also try to go to the things in Albion, right? Um, at the college, a lot of that is just community nights that they have, it is stuff the college sponsors for the community. Um, and as with many other parents, it's taking my kids to the stuff that's going on, so they just get a sense of all the cool things happening where they live. And so I attend church in this community, my husband recently ran for county commissioner in this community. He's active and involved in the community, and a lot of it with three kids at home, two full-time jobs and a partridge in a pear tree is trading off on who can do what or be where at a given time. Um, obviously, I can do the work of the school board, I do my best to be involved where and when I'm able with the gifts and the talents and the capacity that I have to do that. Um, I welcome the opportunity, if you so feel that you will extend it to me, to join the work that you're doing. Uh, I have no doubt that we have equal commitments and passions and desire and very different, but very strong talents. And obviously, there will be no hard feelings harbored, right? Uh, I would like to urge the board to move with what your gut says or what you feel really good about, in terms of adding a member to the body that is going to be making decisions with different skill sets, different perspectives, different strengths and different backgrounds in mind. And I'm sorry, this is a bit scattered, right, just kind of off the cuff here. It's just, I guess I'll say, right, my kids are different ages, so that's the perspective I bring, is I'm trying to think about what they're doing. I'm thinking always, as many parents do, about where they're going next, which for my middle schooler who just started, will be the high school. Um, I'm thinking always about the different kinds of, uh, things that they're navigating, both when they're walking the halls here and also when they're walking the streets where we live and, uh, within the country that we are navigating ourselves at the moment. And so I'm juggling those three things when I'm thinking about the decisions here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jamie.
That's incredibly hard to follow. Wow, um, and I was listening, so I didn't think about what I was gonna say at all. Yeah. I, yeah, I mean, really, I'm running based off of how much involvement I have in the schools and just that I'm there and I see it and that, you know, my kids will be at soccer practice, and while they're at soccer practice, we're walking laps around and discussing, you know, brainstorming different things that we can do and things that could be implemented, maybe things that haven't been tried or why things haven't worked in the past. And it's just a lot of that, you know, sitting at basketball practice and soccer practice and at the P C O meetings and even at Kinder House, starting that young, how to get more people concerned about things, because it's just, I feel like kinda what really drove me to this is how many negative things I've seen on Facebook. And to be perfectly honest, you know, I moved here in twenty ten. I'm not a hundred percent sure when the whole Albion-Marshall thing happened, I don't know all the details of what happened and why things went bad. So I think I just come with a fresh, I just want people to be together. I don't have that chip on my shoulder from whatever it was that went down at that time. And, I don't know, I have, I just wanna look at everything through like rose-colored glasses, I'm like, why can't we all just be happy and get along? We want what's best for kids, what's, what's so difficult? But I know that, like, I really wanna get in there and figure out what it is and how we bring everybody together. And I think that's just the big challenge of it all, is just getting everyone together and trying to get everyone on the same page. I realize that we can't make everybody happy across the board, somebody's always gonna be upset and not agree with what we have to say. But how can we make it so that we can do the most good for the kids in our community? Because that's what I'm passionate about. And I would love to say that I have like this great background in education settings and other than, you know, my own personal education, I don't, I realized that I would not make a great teacher, or being in there every day, that's not for a full-day setting, great for my mental health, probably. But the bits that I get on a daily basis when I'm in there are truly my favorite parts of the day, and those are the parts that inspire me. And seeing it happen and being a part of a group like this, and I'm, I'm so happy that there were so many great candidates tonight. I was really concerned about what, what I was gonna be walking into, so, thank you. I think it's really wonderful that we're all here for these kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I, um, Dr. Brown, uh, reminded me with her comments, something that had stood out to me in her cover letter, um, and then later. So, as you all know, those of you on the board and staff who sit here in these meetings, and those of you wanting to be on the board should know, I find the process of having to do the disciplinary hearings to be the worst thing about being on this board and one of the worst things that I have to do in, in any setting. And it comes with such, such tremendous gravity when you're meeting with young people and sometimes their parents, caregivers, their family, and talking about a decision like expulsion that could significantly change the trajectory of their life. And it, it comes with so much heaviness for me, and there's almost always so many different circumstances and, and the things that got them to where they are. And, um, I come to those hearings with a pit in my stomach and I always leave, uh, and have a sleepless night afterwards. And so I did note in Lauren's letter that she serves on the college's judicial board as well as their academic status and petitions committee, both of which are responsible for making decisions regarding student standing and enrollment at the college based on academic performance, behavioral issues and extenuating circumstances. That doesn't necessarily mean that I would love all of Lauren's ideas, because that just means she's sat in judgment of other people. But when I combine that with her content expertise, it tells me that she understands the complexity of the human condition and how people come to be who they are and what drives behavior, which is something that, it's probably one of the only reasons that I continue to serve on this board is because I believe really strongly in making sure that, that the young people who are who are failing or on the cusp of failing, or who are, that, that we are doing everything we can to support those young people and make sure that if they are booted, that there's even supports for that young person, um, because the other kids are gonna be okay. It's, it's the kids who are not okay that I'm here for. And so, uh, when I saw her experience on that committee and then her content expertise, I thought, aha, here's someone who can help us with those horrific deliberations. You think this deliberation is hard? Those deliberations are the hardest. So, um, and everything that Jamie said was great. And if at eleven fifty-nine, that's our decision, everything's gonna be good, but, but I'm still trying to parse out for me what gives a slight edge.
Any other discussion?
I'll, I'll put in my two cents as well. I, I have no doubt about Dr. Brown's, um, background. I mean, it's, it is impressive and that's, I think that's fantastic. It's gonna sound maybe bad, that's part of the reason why I'm in favor of Jamie's background. It's different. We have people here who are educational background people, actually a couple technically, you know, we've got people with, with different backgrounds on, on, and different, um, aspects of, 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 of the communities, you know, and their different professions and so forth. I think one that sort of stands out is, is her background, and I saw the passion in her eyes even more, so just now, it was better, this was your best for me. Because, and it's not that Dr. Brown didn't have the passion, I can see it as well, um, it's just something about that aspect of your, of your community engagement, which has been a big, I guess that's one of those things for me is community engagement has been something that I've heard so many times before I got on the board and ever since I've been on the board. And I've got somebody who's living it, and I got someone who's going into the schools, that's, these are, it's a perspective I don't feel like we have, actually, on our board, frankly. And I appreciate that. And you won't be in the school system forever, because your kids will move on and you'll, but, but right now, that's where you're at. And I think that's a valuable thing. And the fact that you've put yourself out, one, one of the things that I, 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 we had some issues back, I, I coached swimming, and we had some swimming things that popped up several years ago. And I remember talking to the A D at the time, I said, look, I'm gonna give you my two cents, I'm gonna, I'm gonna complain for a second, but then, I always feel like you gotta be, if you're gonna complain, you better come also with some answers. And that's kind of a personal pet peeve. So I, I see that in what she's telling me, what, what I see on, on, on her we'll call resume here in front of us, is someone who doesn't have to be part of these different boards, but has. And has put forth a lot of, um, effort and time into dedicating time to our kids. Not to say that Dr. Brown doesn't, it's just a different perspective, and that's the one that catches me the most. And I, and actually, I'm glad you, we had a little extra time, because that, to me, brought out something that I was, I thought I saw a little bit, and now I saw more. The, in a sense, the vulnerability of it, and I like that, so. We need that, we need that. Um, I'm, I guess I'm gonna say, I, I come with a background in medicine, I come back with, with a background in working with, uh, plenty of kids who have, and adults with their anxieties and stuff, and we've had discussions at school board meetings, just like to talk about the, the, the behavioral things that have popped up. So I do, I, I bring a perspective, but at the same time, I don't think that makes me necessarily gonna be, I think what helps is that I come, yes, with my background, but I come to listen and hear, and, and I think in the long run, when we, whenever we have these, these board meetings on, on behavioral type, uh, issues, we always struggle, we all struggle with our, our, um, despite our different backgrounds, because we know we want the best interest for those kids. Um, and I just like hearing one more perspective, and I think I'm, I'll, I'll get a different perspective again.
Any other thoughts or comments, discussion? Are we ready to vote again? Everyone ready to vote?
No.
Atta girl.
I'm not. I don't, I, I'm, I'm not, cause I don't wanna go around and come up with the same thing, so I'm trying to figure out. I don't know. I don't know.
I'm so glad I ate a Snickers bar on my way here.
So you're not hungry?
Nope.
Jamie, let me just say, I'm not a teacher either, at all.
I'm not hungry, I'm thirsty then.
Yeah.
Praise God for the teachers, cause it's not, it's not for me. Nope. Just wanted to put that out there, solidarity. Yeah, I don't know, I, I'm not ready, though.
What would help you get ready to vote?
I'm, I'm good for a second. If we have a break for a bathroom break, because I've already had one meeting before this, so.
Yeah.
And I'm on the second bottle now, so.
Matt, you press that, if we have a break.
Or, I don't know if we have.
Are we allowed to do that?
You just have to move.
If we have to wait, I can, I'm a big boy, it's not the first time I've waited. waited.
Is Shawna the only one not ready to vote?
And if that's the case, just make me last.
You're actually first up.
I mean, technically.
Just be first and get it over with.
I don't have an answer. This is what I'm try, I said I wasn't ready.
Okay, well, that's fair.
She can pass, right?
Call my name and I'll say pass.
This isn't Uker?
I think was her, what the problem is, they're both great. And I appreciate Mr. Donahue and Mr. Bischoff for their patience too, you know, but.
Yeah, that's the thing, it's like I can, I can see both of them, both of you, I can see both of you bringing something very important. And I can't decide in this moment which is the most important to me. So, uh, that's why I'm not ready. And I've already changed my mind once, so you know what I'm saying? I can be a swing boat.
Just saying.
Then I think we probably need to throw black smoke up one more time so that you can be last next after that.
I'm, I'm down for whatever.
Whatever, however you want to do it. And if you call my name right this minute, I'm gonna say, I don't know, and you're gonna move on to the next person anyway, so. What would you like to do, Madam President?
Let's vote. Let's vote.
Campbell?
I don't know.
Langard?
Brown.
Underhill?
Brown.
Mahaka?
Brundage.
Allen?
Brown.
Campbell?
Brown. We have four votes.
Congratulations.
For Brown. Congratulations. Thank you all for being here. Uh, are we officially making a motion to appoint for the records? So I would need a motion to appoint, uh, Lauren Brown to the Board of Education.
I move that we appoint Dr. Lauren Brown to the Marshall Public Schools Board of Education.
Tell us second.
We have a motion by Derek, supported by Mark. Any discussion?
I appreciate, I, I appreciate the lengthy discussion.
I do too, I do too. I really appreciate this board and this deliberation. And I also again appreciate all four of our candidates. And there are committees and there's work that needs to be done in this district and we need all of you to be engaged. So I hope you will be. And, and who knows, you know, like Becky might let me quit, so somebody else could get appointed at some point, so. And, uh, but there'll be elections too, I mean, there's, please do not stop. Please, all four of you, I mean that. Or all three of you that aren't being appointed now.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
All four of you, no matter what.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Don't take, don't take not being appointed as a sign of disinterest, we have one seat. That's it. But we do have seats on committees. And I could say, check out this committee, check out that committee.
Yeah, I know which committee is the.
But I will not, I'm just saying they're, they're open. And we would love to have you.
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right, so we have a motion by Derek, supported by Mark, we're in discussion. We done with discussion? This is a roll call vote, so we're gonna start with Jerry?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Shawna?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Okay, now, Dr. Brown, we gotta take the oath of office, so you have to.
All right, do you hereby accept the office of Member of Board of Education for Marshall Public Schools in Michigan, dated January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five?
I do.
Okay, do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this, of this state and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Member of, of, of the Member of Board of Education of Marshall Public Schools according to the best of your ability?
I do.
So you sign.
So you are gonna go right up to the table and you are filling that seat, we're gonna jump in headfirst. Okay, now we're onto action item number six, which is the approval of third-party contracting vendor for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
Kendra, do you wanna talk a little bit about the approval?
Yeah, because you have to go to the microphone.
Go to the microphone so the people that are watching can hear you.
And see you.
And see you, yes.
I can read what was put in the board packet, so Hunter Perel is a third-party contracting vendor that has an established relationship with Marshall Public Schools when it comes to heating, ventilation, air conditioning and plumbing services. Pardon me. Hunter Perel has received, uh, funding for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five from our sinking fund that has exceeded the bid threshold of thirty thousand five hundred and twelve dollars for the year. In light of this, we are asking the board to approve them and the work they do from our sinking fund for the school year.
Yeah, so last year in our audit, it was, um, brought up a lot of vendors that were used in our sinking fund and they just asked like, did your board approve these? And the answer was no last year because they're services and we typically don't do that. But because the auditors brought it to our attention and because Hunter Perel has exceeded that limit, we want to bring it to your attention so that you guys can approve it.
So this would be, okay, let's put a motion on the table and then let's discuss. Anyone?
Move for approval.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Shawna, supported by Derek. Any discussion? I just, I just have a question. So we are approving them as a third-party vendor, like a service provider.
Yes.
Not necessarily that we're approving a certain amount, just that we are approving them to provide services and to be paid out of our sinking fund.
That's correct.
Okay.
And they've already been providing the services for us?
Correct.
In the past.
Yep.
So we're just complying with an audit? Question?
Yes. Yep, it wasn't a finding, it's not like we're doing anything wrong. They just, um, because their services exceed the threshold, they want it to be, you know, transparent, public knowledge that we ask Hunter Perel to provide these services. And, and it does add up and it's out of our sinking fund, so. Just so everybody's aware and transparent, that's what's going on.
So is that something that, um, we plan on doing moving forward? Like if it's over a certain amount, then we're going to publicly approve it that way?
Correct.
Um, okay, that's cool, just wanted to clarify that.
Any more discussion?
So there's no other like bidding going on or is it, and this is gonna be, do we redo this again?
The difference is, is this is a service, unlike, you know, when we buy paper or milk or whatever, we have to go out for bid and go through all of the process. This is a service, which is a little bit different, that we don't necessarily have to go out.
We could, we could. We could go out and ask for, you know, quotes from other third-party providers to, you know, give us quotes on how much it would cost to service our HVAC or plumbing. Um, and we could award that for a year or two or three. Um, but we have been using Hunter Perel and, um,
Probably familiar with our system.
Yes.
And that's what I'm getting, I mean, right now they're, they're doing it and as long as there's no excessive, they don't stand out as so costly compared to somebody else, I, I, I understand that. I, my, that's my question is down the road, when do we make that next step again? Because I know these things pop up randomly, whatever. And I know that a lot of times it is a, it's a purchase, but there's also a lot of times a service component. And so when does that come up again, I guess?
Yeah, we can do it, um, like in May, June for the next school year if you would like, that, that's an option. We're looking at that for a lot of our services.
I think that would be reasonable, I would like that.
Yes.
And that is something that we can discuss when we're doing our changeover, if we decide to do that? Is that, um, like if we decide to change, um, oh, the people that oversee our policies, like that can be a part of a policy change that we can implement, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Any more discussion? Okay, um, we have a motion by Shawna, supported by Derek, we've already had discussion. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. Okay, thank you. And then we are onto action item number seven, the Marshall High School band trip to New York City in spring of twenty twenty-six.
So Marshall High School band trip is, um, planning to travel to New York City in April of twenty twenty-six. Um, the trip is, supports the band curriculum. The trip request is being presented now so that the students can begin to plan and pay for the trip. It should be noted that this trip is not conducted annually, but has been conducted in the past.
Do they need chaperones?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
To, to approve for the band trip.
Do we have a support? All right, we have a motion by Mark, supported by Jerry, any discussion?
Is this during spring break?
No.
No.
I mean, I'm assuming it's not going to be, I don't know that for a fact. I, I've been on this trip with the kids.
Okay.
The alternate.
I just saw April, I thought.
Uh, it says spring, I think. Yeah, it's spring, yeah. So the, um, uh, I'll just, I'll throw out the information I can tell you is that, um, the band, basically every two years does a trip, so like, um, every four years they've done right now for the last, I don't know how long, but they've done it for a while, um, a trip down to Disney World. And they actually, it's actually a really cool experience for the kids because they actually get to march and play in the Magic Kingdom, which is very cool. And then on the opposing sort of two years, so the, also every four years has been a New York trip. And, uh, the New York trip, um, it's a little bit different experience because of course for a lot of these kids, I think it's a neat experience because they get to see the city, a, a city. But at, and there's the pluses and the minuses of New York City. I'll leave it at that. But, but they, they, uh, they get to see a couple of shows, some musicals, they actually do some sightseeing, stuff like that. Uh, it was a really nice bonding experience for the kids, it was, and it wrapped up, um, very nicely with, um, actually they had like a sightseeing cruise type of thing.
So they don't play or march?
Uh, not on that one, they didn't. In the past, maybe they, they may have in the past, I'm not aware of, but, uh, but this time, when I was there, um, actually with my daughter, a couple of years ago, or a year and a half ago, I guess you could say, it was, um, uh, there was no playing, but it was, but it was a very neat experience.
Yeah.
And it was, yeah, and there's chaperones and we go around and it's a, it's a very neat experience for the kids, I think, so.
Any more discussion? All right, we have, I think I wrote, did this down, uh, motion by Mark, supported by Jerry. Did I get that right? Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, and now we're onto public comment. Would anybody from the public like to, um, address the board for three minutes on anything that you'd like? Oh, yes, the green form, there's a green form.
You can just bring it over here. Thank you.
Yes, Ian gets everything.
Uh, I'd just like to point out tonight that you have two candidates from Walters Elementary School. It just kind of shows your edu, you know, that our dedication to our schools. Um, you know, uh, me and Jamie both are really active up there. And, um, and I encourage you guys to come to our school. We, we really would appreciate you guys to come to our P.T., PCO meetings. You know, we'd love to see the board members and stuff and, you know, and we have such a great, great school up there and we're always looking for volunteers also, uh, on Popcorn Fridays and everything like that. But, but I think it's important for, for the board members to get to the schools, to see actually what's going on, you know, um, and that was one of the great things about, you know, Jamie and myself, was that, you know, we're really active in one school. But we have many, many schools that we need to get out and get our boots out, out there and talk to the parents and even talk to the kids. Because the kids are a valuable part of this program, right? And if we need the kids to go back home and say, man, we saw the plans for the gym, which we had, and when you walk through our corridor, we had out there the plans, what, you know, our bond issue was. I know my boys, they'd come home and they'd say, yeah, did you see that, you know, the new gym stuff? But it gets them excited and they go home and they start talking about it and hopefully get parents excited. But that's just a small portion of it, so. So I encourage you guys to come and, um, come up to Walters and see us and we'd love to have you guys and tell you about the good stuff and the bad stuff. Um, and, you know, we, we've seen Ian up there, you know, many times on different things and stuff. And, but we appreciate that we could see the board members, you know, and love to come and hang out and, uh, have some popsicles with us on our, on our, uh, our big, uh, what, what, what do we call it now, where we have the floatables?
Carnival? Carnival?
We have autumnness, yeah. We have autumnness, so I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like, would, would you like to address the board? Okay, let's move on to item number nine, board member, future agenda item, requests and comments for which no action may be taken at this meeting. Would anyone like to say anything or add a future agenda item?
I just want to thank all four candidates, I appreciate it very, very much. Because even like, when Derek was talking, when I came, there was only two of us. You know, and it's nice to see now four people. Hopefully sometime there'll be more than four people, you know? So thank you, thank you, thank you.
And, and it was a group of people, because, you know, Mark mentioned during COVID, there were larger groups of people. It was four people who all wanted to come and contribute and do good things for the district, they weren't just mad people.
Right.
Right, like there's a difference in people who are genuinely interested in dedicating their skills and time and experience to the district to make it stronger and better. And that was the case with all four tonight. And people who have an agenda or an axe to grind, who are mad about something and they're coming to get on the board to do that, there's a, there's a very clear difference. And so it's neat to have a, a group like that.
I can't really say much because I came on the board because I had an axe to grind, so I'm just gonna be clear right now, um, uh, to go on public record that I did come to the school board because I was ticked off about the air conditioning in your school. And here I am. And here I am, almost five years later, so, I mean, it turns, you know, that passion or anger turns into love.
If it's channeled.
If it's channeled properly, yes, yes. I'll call myself out on that one.
Yeah, passionate red hot.
Okay.
All right, any other board member comments? All right, meeting adjourned.